Meeting of Lima City Council to order will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor Glenn, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
All minds clear. Oh heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you so much for what you have done for us, Lord. Lord, I ask for a special prayer for my dad. Oh Lord, I ask for a special prayer for Mr. Roach family too, Lord. Oh Lord, just touch them right now, Jesus. Come, Lord, you know we're in a need right now, Lord. Lord, bless every city council and any city official here tonight, Jesus. And Lord, allow the medium having with the companies tomorrow, Lord. Allow some jobs come out there for the folks in the sixth world in the city of Lima, Jesus. God, know I need you, oh mighty God. Oh God, and the blessing of the Sable Lot area, Lord. Allow me to lay something there, Jesus, in this meeting tomorrow, Jesus. And we thank you in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll have the clerk color roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Here.
Counselor McLean.
Here.
Counselor Lowe.
Here.
Counselor Crayer.
Here.
Counselor Adams.
Here.
Counselor Glenn.
Here.
Counselor Miles.
And Counselor Nixon.
Here. The consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that item A be received, filed, and approved.
Motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve item A. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move communication number one be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that item, communication number two, be received, filed, and legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? Mr. President. Counselor Lowe.
I would like to ask Wycombe, this wasn't taken all out of general, why do the CDB funds, CDBG funds have to be touched in order to purchase this vehicle?
That was based on past practice of trying to share the cost between CDBG. It is used for, mainly for property maintenance inspectors. It does go into the DCD fleet, but it is used for, mainly by a property maintenance inspector, which is a CDBG funded activity.
We have money now, though. We have money in the general fund. So I'm asking, why are we continuously, I know it happened in the past, but we're on the new leadership now.
Well, and again, I mean, I think it's eligible to use, you know, CDBG funds for it, but it's up to, it's the council's pleasure. If council would like for it to come out of general fund, then we can do that as well.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Director of Community Development requesting legislation to enter into a contract with Reineke Ford.
Uh, Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move the communication number three be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. The motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Deputy Director of Parks requesting legislation to enter into a contract with Game Time Play Corps Company and Comp Pan Inc. for playground equipment.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that communication number four be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Master Maintenance.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that communication number five be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to amend the contract with Human Supply.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that communication number six be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
If I may, you know, I keep thinking about this, and I keep remembering that we did a brownfield study over there. Did we not take all of the tanks and stuff that were over there removable before?
Yeah. Yeah. Remember.
Mr. President.
Mr. Elstro.
Just clarification. You're asking about the additional expenditures on the roads site. We had done as much investigation as one possibly could. The sum of money that we're asking for, I believe, is in around forty-eight thousand, forty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars. That is because of some areas that we got into that were basements under sidewalks, which could not be detected at the time. Also, there was an oil tank found in the old abandoned parking garage area that was not obvious to anyone at the time. And there was also some stormwater work that we did on the east side of the one building that stands on Market Street. So it's a culmination of that stuff, and no, unfortunately, there was no way in knowing in advance of these problems that needed to be encountered.
Thank you for the explanation.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Auditor regarding financial reports.
Uh, Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that item seven, or communication number seven, be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second are to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number eight.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Patrick Staffing.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. The motion carries. Communicate, I'm sorry, next is reports of officials. Number one is Chief Martin and Officer Weedman regarding the Special Olympics torch run.
Mr. President, it is with great distinction and honor that the Lima Police Department has been asked to not only participate in this year's Special Olympic Torch Run, but has also actually been asked to participate in the planning and the organizing of the event. The reason why I've asked Officer Weedman to be here today is because she has, on her own initiative, taken the lead on behalf of the Lima Police Department to plan this event and to organize not just participants from the Lima Police Department, but from safety services throughout all of Allen County. And so she is going to be giving the details of the event, but prior to that, I would like to just say that I think she's done an outstanding job in working on this project. But at the same time, when I say she's done outstanding job, that's really exactly what I expected of her, because since she has joined the ranks of the Police Department, she has been an outstanding employee. And in short, I will just say she's been a very good cop. So, Officer Weedman?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Like Chief said, my name is Officer Weedman. Briefly about the torch run, every, or a lot of counties in Ohio do a leg of this, June fifteenth through the twenty-third. It ends down at the Ohio State Patrol Academy where they run into the horseshoe with the torch. For the Special Olympics, it raises awareness for Special Olympics, partners with law enforcement. And I'm proud to say that we've raised over seven thousand dollars that we're going to give to the torch run when we come. Our leg is going to be June nineteenth. It's going to begin at ten a.m. in the square, where Chief Martin's actually going to begin with the torch. We've got a route planned throughout the city. We're going to go up Elizabeth, across Rob, the Rob Park Kids for the Parks Summer Program. They actually, the prison inmates made signs for them, supporting torch runs, supporting the cause, so I'm really excited to see that. We're going to stop real quick at the FOP Hall. We're going to go north on Metcalf, going to go down Brower, we're going to go up to the prison. The prison inmates, they actually, inmate groups actually raised over two thousand dollars for us, in additions to the signs that they made for the kids, and they made a really nice quilt with all of the logos on it. From the prison, we're going to run down West Street, Rob to Main. Sheriff Trigley is going to carry the torch down Main Street. We're going to stop at the sheriff's office, and then the Special Olympic athlete kids themselves from Allen County are actually going to run with us, law enforcement officers, through the square. Bath Township Fire Department and the City Fire Department is going to have their ladder trucks up with the big flag, and we're going to end at the Civic Center around noon. We partnered with the Rotary, who's been very, very generous in their donations and their support. They've got a meal planned for us that they fully donated, and it's, we're going to have a little short program with their monthly program to recognize all the athletes running, as well as the law enforcement, and it's just going to be kind of a really nice event. A lot of community involvement, a lot of, as Chief said, a lot of agencies throughout the community. The sheriff's office has several people running, LPD, Shawnee Township, I believe, Perry Township, and even, I think, Marysville PD, because their county doesn't do anything like this. So we're just really proud to be a part of it, and I am super excited for it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Howard Elstro and Rick Staley regarding the Playground Master Plan.
Thank you, Mr. President. What I am proud to share with you tonight is a work product that we've been concerned about for a couple of years, and that is a comprehensive look and approach to renew each and every one of our playgrounds throughout the entire park system. As I told council at the Finance Committee hearing earlier this year, it was our intent to continue work that we began last year, looking at each playground, their deficiencies, and the potential for renewal of each of those playgrounds. This is a very aggressive, multi-year project that will spend over a million dollars renovating these playgrounds. It arises out of a recognition that much of our equipment is antiquated, it has fallen into disrepair, and it's just not as interesting and encourage activity and play as modern day playgrounds can. What I'm going to be asking tonight, after a short presentation by Mr. Staley, the Director of Parks and Recreation, we're going to be asking for authority to proceed with the first phase of this project, which is the renovation of playgrounds at Rob, Froat West End by Shelter Two, some minor modifications at the tot lot at the corner of Woodlawn and Spencerville Road in Froat, and the renovate, and additions at Martin Luther King Parks. The price tag for that is about two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. We have identified those funds. Those funds are coming from private sources, from private industries here in town, from building our future funds, from community development block grant funds, and I'm not sure what I left out at this point, general funds. Subsequent years, we will get into the expenditures that we will be spending after this year, but likely, we need, not likely, we will need to raise seven-hundred, eight-hundred thousand dollars to complete the overall program. With the groundwork that the engineering staff, that the recreation staff, that Mr. Staley has done thus far, I am confident that local industry and donors throughout this city will assist us, partner with us in rebuilding these playgrounds. So with that, Mr. Staley, if you could walk us through some of the as-is and some of the proposals of this first phase?
Sure. Kind of quickly, you all have handouts, you know, if I get lost in this, I'd ask Mr. Morrissey, who is, I personally want to thank Jim for all his help with this, working with our vendors. It's been a process that, quite honestly, we started working a year and a half ago, went out and did an audit of all of our sites, got engineering involved, started looking at vendors and using their expertise. This is a, this is a drawn-out process for a reason. We're only, we want to do it right. We want to do it all-inclusive, we want to do it the way it should be done, and for that reason, it's going to take a little bit of time. So I want to try and move through this process. We have thirteen playgrounds within eight of our parks, and they're all described there. The next slide indicates, you know, kind of where we're at with things, you know? Some of our equipment is just, just so antiquated that, and the industry has changed so much, and people's abilities to get out and reach out and cover the entire community is where playground equipment is today. And the last one, it talks very clearly, playground equipment design has evolved into all-inclusive play. This allows everyone to participate regardless of their age or their physical abilities or capabilities. So again, we want to, we want to go out and reach out and get as many of those folks who are not getting to enjoy our playground sites today. Here's an overview of Rob. Again, you all can read just fine, but a lot of antiquated equipment and surface that were, that, again, the surface sometimes becomes the most expensive part of the process, and we'll talk about that a little bit down the road, but where we are lacking, and where we need to bring, you know, bring us up to the bar, bring, raise the bar up a little bit in a lot of areas, surface and equipment. And if you can go to the next slide, we'll talk about, you know, some of the things that would replace. Here's an overview of, of the site that's looking north at Rob Park. We have the two playground sites connected by a sidewalk. Again, Area One, we're looking at ages two to five, and then a five to twelve grouping over on the right-hand side. And with some of the, again, antiquated things that we just saw in the previous slide, you look at some of the things that would meet, or come into our budget with the proposed Rob Park equipment. Is that not, there we go. It's, it's quite a change, starting with the surface and the border. Brett Ream, who is our playground, or, excuse me, our rec supervisor, is also a certified playground inspector, and he goes to class and, he's been to the class, he's passed the course, obviously, and it works with us and some of our neighboring communities. But the bottom line is, we do not meet some of the specifications that are out there. And railroad ties no longer are considered safe borders for playground sites. We have fall zones, based on the height of things and space for kids to fall and so forth. So again, these are the things that we're, we're looking to meet, not only with some new equipment, but new service and new borders. Our second site that we're looking at is the west end of Froat. Just have two items there, swing set and a slide that is in disrepair, needs a lot of work. We can't even get parts for some of that, parts of that, for that slide and for some of our even swing equipment. But again, starting with the surface and the borders, working our way up, we look to, to enhance that, and we have two, two parts of that, what I want to call that site. Phase one, which should be included in this first one, there's some of the equipment there that we're looking to replace and put into that. And then Phase two, which would be later on down the road, would be taking that site and extending it north a bit where we've got the room to do that, and then put in some of these equipment items that, that we've got from, this, this site here was the Comp, the Comp Pan Company, which is a, really a neat company that Jim has done some work with, and we find that a lot of their stuff, not only is it inclusive, but it, it's also very rugged equipment. It's going to give that spot a different look than what it is now, obviously, but again, designed with expansion in mind for the future at that site, all-inclusive play equipment. By that, I mean, equipment that kids that are either physically or mentally challenged can use. As you see, everything's ADA accessible, and access to the site, obviously, is ADA approved. So those are some of the pieces of equipment we're looking to move into that site. The next one is the tot lot, which is, Howard spoke about, which is up on the corner, tied into that shelter house there at the corner of North Shore and Woodlawn. Again, if you look at the existing, we currently use woodchips that we take from our chipper and store, and then bring them out to sites and fill-in areas. We're going, again, looking at this engineered fiber, which is a more readily-used surface. Some of the equipment there, nineteen ninety-six. Again, this spot here is a two-to-five-year-old age it's targeted for. So with that, you know, again, we want to add a few features to that while that piece of equipment that you just saw is, is going to stay for a little bit. We are looking to add to that site with a few of the, the features that you would see in the next slide, that would tie into the space there with the, with the pond, and the proposal for this tot lot would be to kind of go, again, with, Jim, what was the, what was the term you used today?
Naturistic.
Naturistic, that, that ties things in. If you look here at the, at the Discovery Cave, it's got little fossil-type things inside. You can also climb on the outside, again, tying into what's there around that, that pond and that shelter on the west end of Froat Park. Trying to move along, at Dr. Martin Luther King Park, we, we run into, into some heavy range from time to time, as we all know, and we get into some drainage issues out there with that small playground space. Our goal there, again, is to take some of the existing structures and leave them, but also enhance the site. Existing flooding, drainage stuff, we make that go away with our friends in engineering, and then, of course, getting the, the proper fiber, engineered fiber mulch in, and, and making the changes. You can see the expansion for Dr. King Park. What would that include, the existing, with what we would like to move it into, space-wise? And then here are some of the different features we would like to add to that site. Tree climbers, which are just a real nice asset in, in most parks. You have a number of the swings, and then some of the other rides, like merry-go-round swing type thing here, and then, so you see that with that expansion, using some of the old, putting in the right fiber, engineered fiber mulch, which I keep talking about, is going to make a great difference along with new borders. So with that said, those are the ones we have in Phase One of our, of our project. As we move to Phase Two, Lincoln Park needs a lot of work, as we, as we all know, we're going to condense some of the play areas, enhance parking, and then really turn this site into, as you can see, the square in the gray, moving the play areas into that area, looking to fence that site. This has been a real education for us as we've gone through this process, and learning about the needs of the community and needs of children. One of the, one of the issues that I was not quite aware of is the value of fencing in a playground site for autistic children who will tend to get in an open space and just run. And with that said, we felt that with some of the needs in and around that, that park, and in partnership with the Children's Development Center, they had come over and used our park, and when we sat down with the, with those folks, they related that we were looking at this as an option for, for, for Lincoln Park. Expanding the parking, making it more safe for people to approach, and then, of course, the surface at this, at this facility would be the poured-in-place rubber, which is, is state-of-the-art for what most, most playgrounds have in the South, and it, it makes it a lot more accessible. Here are some of the designs that the company has come up with that we would put into that structure, again, minus the fence, which we think is, which we understand is a big part of the safety for that site. Lincoln East, again, some of the different apparatuses that we, that are available for kids. You have the expressions seat, which is something we've been introduced to, where an adult can swing with the child, and they do it together. Again, some of the sensory wave type of equipment, again, for the children, just a, just a lot of different things with sound and, and sight for, for kids. Here's some of the, again, the, the Comp Pan equipment, it's heavy-duty, and we look forward to introducing that equipment into our parks as well. One of the, one of the nice things about these guys coming on board along with Game Time is it, each park is not going to be the same. They're going to be a little bit different, which is kind of nice, you get people from the east side wanting to go to the west side and try that park out. The west side going to the north side, the north side going to the south side, or the west side going to the east side, which, it, it is a great way to involve community in getting into other parks, and not just, you know, hanging out in their own neighborhood, getting out and experiencing some of the things that we have in different parks. The next project, again, down the road, is replacing a lot of the equipment that's at Bear Pit. Again, this is down the road next year, and again, with the expansion there with, with the site compared to what it is now, and putting in some of the new equipment. That equipment is pretty old. Schoonover, again, on track for next year. I think you'll see that back of the packet. Existing structures, some of it has reached its life expectancy, and we're going to need to do some changes there, again, starting with the surface, and opening that up and widening out that space, and adding the equipment. Again, different ages here, five to twelve. The parking coming off of York, like to develop that site down here so that you can see the, again, adding additional safe parking for people, so they're not just pulling off and easily accessing that site. Those are the numbers. I'll let you go ahead, Howard, and address those.
We have Mr. Morrissey from our Engineering Division here, who helped with a lot of the designs in partnership with, with Brett Ream of the Recreation Department, and we can take any kind of technical questions that we have, that you might have tonight. Again, what you can see is there will be different characters, characteristics, and a different character of each playground. There are some playgrounds that just cater towards the toddlers, some at the more traditional playgrounds from the five-to-12 range, with Lincoln Park being in proximity to Memorial Hospitals, and the challenged population that works, that is serviced out of Memorial, that actually comes over and visit. We picked up some of the queues and some of the requests from that population, and, and each of these, and then there will be some of those playgrounds which are much more aggressive, and some will have various themes like the nature, or it could be pirates or anything on down the line. Again, right now, we're ready to go with the first four projects being Rob Park, Froat Park, the tot lot at Froat, which is just an addition of a couple of, of items, and Martin Luther King Parks this season. As I said prior, we have already begun to reach out to the corporate citizens, asking for their participation with us as we rebuild these playgrounds throughout the entire system. So I hope that we have your support tonight, that we can go forward with the, with the ordinances that are on the agenda. We do have the funds available for them in place, and we hope that you also provide support as we go through the next few months and into next year, because we will need, as I said, reach out to the corporate citizens of this city, of this county, and ask for their support in making sure that all of these playgrounds get renovated so that our children have safe places to play, they learn active and good health habits by active play outside. places to play, they learn active and good health habits by active play outside, and certainly, all of us know the benefits of playgrounds and building quality of life in a good community. With that, are there any questions?
Councilmembers, have any questions? Thank you. Next is ordinance 11417.
Leaving special assessment of the property maintenance code charges on premises of the City of Lima.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that ordinance 11417 be passed on its first reading.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 11417 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lo.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 11417 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 11517.
Amending the 2017 annual budget.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that ordinance 115-17 be passed on its first reading.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 11517 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lo.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Ordinance 11517 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 11617.
Authorizing the mayor to withdraw from the agreement with the City of Cleveland Central Collection Agency for tax collection assistance.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that ordinance number 116-17 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 11617 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lo.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 11617 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 11717.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Reineke Ford Lincoln for the purchase of the 2017 AWD Ford Escape for the Department of Community Development Property Maintenance Code Enforcement Program.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that ordinance 11717 be passed on its first reading.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 11717 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lo.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 11717 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 11817.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Patrick Staffing for contract labor services for the Detective Bureau of the Police Department.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that ordinance 11817 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 11817 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Glenn.
No.
Counselor Miles.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lo.
No.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 11817 will go to second reading, having failed to receive the required two-thirds majority vote. Ordinance 11917.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Master Maintenance for cleaning services.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that ordinance 11917 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 11917 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lo.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 11917 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 12017.
Amending ordinance 14-17.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that ordinance 12017 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 12017 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lo.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 12017 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 12117.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Game Time and Play Court Company.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that ordinance 12117 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 12117 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lo.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 12117 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 12217.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Compagnia Inc.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that ordinance 12217 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 12217 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lo.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 12217 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Next is miscellaneous business. Counselor Glenn.
I won't take that along tonight.
Promise?
That's a promise. Images Foundation, Hartley Images Foundation Production Company will be featuring Walk with Grace, holding open talent. And, well, we are getting a movie here in Lima. I know everybody's been hearing about it. But Dr. Sherrill's had told me to let everyone know about, each individual will come out to Bab School on the seventh, eighth, and ninth, this week. And what they're going to be doing, they'll be airing a wrestling match in this new movie. So, anybody who will get involved with that, have their stuff on TV during the Christmas time, when it'll be airing. Sure, in the United Methodist Church on the fourteenth, and that's what they're going to be doing, where it can be a factory working outlook. And June the fifteenth, sixteenth, and twenty twenty-first, it'll be in Bluffton. And they're going to be working on different skis. So, you'll be seeing a lot of that come around, and she will be talking about it a lot. Also, I want to thank everyone who helped us out with the painting of houses. And we thank all the donations. Thank you, guys, so much for bringing it out. I know so many people got rejected because you live in rental houses. We cannot paint rental houses unless the landlord gave permission. And I know that we call in Tony Giger, I mean, from outpainting their house, and they didn't want the house painted that way. We got to have permission from them. But, you know, a lot of folks showed their hometown pride. These folks came from all over. You might say all over, they came from everywhere, from all around the county. And they heard about it, and they came out to help. And that's what I like about that. They wanted to help out. I want to congratulate Reverend Malley, his fiftieth anniversary. Someone go by him and let him know for fifty years he's been a pastor. And they had a special birthday party for him. It was past Saturday. And he deserved it. And I want to thank him for all he had done. You know, he's a tremendous preacher. So, thank you so much, Reverend Malley. Let's keep my dad in prayer. And I heard about Mr. Roach. We are keeping his family in prayer, too. You know, he's in trying time, but we know God, and we're going to know God will handle that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor Glenn. Counselor Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Mr. Starly and Mr. Morrissey and Mr. Elstro for the work that you guys put into this with the new park playgrounds, and especially with the autistic children area. You know, I had a couple of conversations myself with an individual that had that issue, and these guys had her come in and talk to them. And, you know, that means a lot to more people than what we know. And I just wanted to make mention of that, that I do appreciate that you took the time to care about these individuals. Also, I want to mention Coffee with a Cop, Saturday, eleven to one, at the Northwest Street McDonald's up in the Northland area. There'll be several people, including our chief there. And it'll be a good time and invite people out to that. And the last thing is, I want to remind people to be good to each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gordon. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to remind people that school's out, watch out for the kiddies, you know, slow down a little bit, take a couple extra minutes to get across town. You'll still get there, you'll get there alive. Be safe. Make sure you just watch out for the kids that are out of school, and they're not paying attention. They're going to have fun. So, I appreciate you doing that. And I also would like to excuse Counselor Miles's pay and per absence today, if we would make the motion, if we do that.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to approve the absence and salary of Counselor Miles. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye goes opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor McLean, Counselor Lo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like the record to reflect. My mindset, one thing, my mouth said something today. Ordinance 117-17, if the record will reflect, that I really wanted a no on that vote. Thank you. I want to say something to Mr. Roach. He has been in constant communication. It feels good when you can call administration and they get back with you and answer you and speak to you. And he has. And even though he was taking care of families as soon as he got back, he made it a point to get with me. So, I just wanted to let you know, I appreciate that. Also, Mr. Howard Elstro tried to do a follow-up with me on Friday. I was busy, I did not respond, but I appreciate you reaching out also. To the Roach family, our prayers are with you. Can't imagine what you're going through, but God's in control.
That's right.
And I just want to say that my heart's with you, bro. Outside of that, I'm thankful to see Ms. Crayer sitting beside me to the left.
That's right.
A lot of prayer.
That's right.
So, we know that God is in the working business, and he's handling things. So, I just want to say thank you. I'm going to ask the individuals in Third Ward what I've been asked to do, and that is to be patient. And I'm probably going to take a lot of flack according to some of the ways I voted this evening, because people have came at me and said that they want to see more in the Third Ward. Believe me, it's not that I'm not communicating it to administration. Mr. Starly made a point tonight to say that they want to do it right. Sometimes it takes just a little bit longer.
That's right.
Okay, so, I'm asking you, again, to be patient. I'm asking that the administration follow through on what they have promised. And I don't want to wait like I had to last time. So, I'm asking you, Third Ward, to be patient. Thank you. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Lo. Counselor Crayer.
Okay, one thing, you can believe that. On Wednesday at 6:00 PM, Riverside North is having our last meeting. We will be meeting at the Froch Shelter, which is the one down by the pond. We do a potluck every year, and it's always really fun. It's not a traditional meeting, it's just a regular, make new friends or hang out with your friends. So, bring a potluck dinner, and we hope to see anybody from the community who wants to come, come. That's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Crayer. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to extend a thank you to Mr. Roach and his department. They've been out addressing the alleys, gravel and grading. I've heard from residents, and shortly afterwards, I think later that afternoon, they were in my area in the alley. But people are thrilled to see him, grateful to fill the potholes, and they're doing a beautiful job. And thank you for that. I, too, Mr. Roach was calling me as he was heading out of town. He took the time to call, and he knows he's been in my thoughts and prayers since then. His family. That's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Adams. I don't have anything to add this evening. Everything's been mentioned. We do have an executive session.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that we adjourn to executive session for the discussion of real estate.
Second. The motion, the second, is to adjourn into executive session for the purposes of discussing real estate. Any discussion on the motion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lo.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Motion carries, and we will adjourn to executive session in five minutes.